Greenwood County Council, thank you for being here tonight. Your county council has been in executive session since 4:00 P. M. We do have action to take coming out of this session, and I believe the county attorney would like to give us some information on that action.
I think one of your members wants to make a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
There with me. I move that beginning tomorrow, February the 5th, 2025, building permit fees related to Hurricane Helene damage in Greenwood County be waived according to a process to be more particularly outlined and delineated. Thank you for all this work. Delineated by a memo from the county manager. The memo will include a 30-day period to end on March the 6th, 2025, during which county property owners who anticipate needing a building permit for repairing Hurricane Helene damage must put their names on a list in the next 90 days, ending on May 5th, 2025. Those on the list may pull a building permit for construction in the county without paying the associated fee. Those who paid the building permit fees between December 1st, 2025, and February 5th, 2025, December 1st, 2024, and February 5th, 2025, and whose permits were for repairing damage related specifically to Hurricane Helene are eligible for refund of these fees must apply through the Greenwood County Building Department. This building permit fee relief is applicable in the county only. It does not govern building permit fees in the city of Greenwood and other municipalities. Right?
I think they use county fees.
Okay, all right. In the city, all right, I got you. It does not govern building permit fees in the city of Greenwood. There's my small motion.
Thank you, Councilman. And I assume that we will, we will take that up in the first order of new business. Because we have, we need a motion now to come out of executive session before we can take action on this.
Right, you need to come out of executive session, but then you have an item related from two executive sessions.
And we want to take that up immediately then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. So, hearing that, I need a motion now for us to, to come out of executive session.
Motion to exad- that's it.
Ms. Miller, from Mr. Teresa, thank you very much. So, we are now out of executive session, and we will, we will, yes, we'll vote.
We need to come out.
We just came out. We need a, we, we need a motion to vote on that, don't we?
You got a motion in a second. We just need to vote.
All in favor.
We had a motion to come out of executive session. We are out. Do we not need a motion? We do not need a motion to vote on that.
We need to vote.
We got a motion in a second. We got to vote.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You have to make a motion.
I'm sorry. No, I'm talking to myself. That's my problem. Thank you very much. Yes. All in favor of us exiting, exiting session. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I made that so difficult. Now, I need a motion, I believe, for us to vote on, on what has just been presented to us in regard to our building permit.
That is the motion.
I think Dane gave you the motion.
I'm not reading it.
You have a second.
We need a second for that. Thank you, Ms. Miller. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous and carried. Thank you very much. I think Mr. Teresa Griffin has our indication. I have a guest, I think, that will be praying for us, Mr. Teresa.
Let's say good evening to each and every one of you. We do tonight have Reverend Willie Norman Jr. praying for us. He is a member of District One. He's also a retired minister, but he has been put back into active ministry. So, we're just actually happy to have him with us today. And he is a member of Mount Zion AME Church in the Promised Land area.
For your total God, we give you thanks for this day and for all of the blessings of life. We acknowledge you as Creator and Sustainer of all life and recognize it is in you that we live, move, and have our bare being. We honor your presence and we invoke your presence as we undertake the agenda that is before us this night. We know that you have ordained government, therefore, Lord, we pray now that you will bless those that you set aside to serve in government. Grant it to them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, the physical and spiritual strength that is needed to undertake all that they may have to endure this day. We thank you for the staff of Greenwood County, the residency. We pray your blessings upon all those now bound in duties to pray for, not only for the citizens of Greenwood, but we pray for the citizens of this state, this nation, and this world in which you are placed in our hands. Help us, Lord God, to be good stewards over that which you have entrusted to us, forgive us all ways of our sins. And let us be mindful of the fact that you do require us to do justly, to love mercifully, and to walk humbly with you. And Father, we pray that in all that we do, we'll bring only glory to you, for we oblige in all blessings in the mighty and magnificent name of Jesus the Christ in heaven. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Norman. Thank you for being with us tonight. If you will, all please join us in place allegiance to our flag. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I will tell you that we are a couple of council members short tonight. You've noticed District Two and District Three are absent due to illness and travel, so the five of us will try to carry on. I trust, Council, that you've had an opportunity to review your minutes from the last meeting, and I need a motion, please, to approve those minutes.
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Teresa.
Second.
Second from Mr. Pruitt. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, and that's unanimous. Ms. Susan, I don't think we have any public comment tonight. Thank you, ma'am. We have several presentations tonight, and I think before we start, I'm going to deviate from the agenda just a bit. I think Mr. Bateman has, has a personal commitment that he needs to move to. So, James, if you would please come forward, I'd appreciate it.
Give me a few minutes here.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, members of council. Skip ahead for us to, to isolate. Thank you for the check number for you earlier than my. I'm going to give you an update tonight on economic development and our 2024 year-end review. We're going to recap capital investment and job creation that were created by the projects that we announced last year. I can tell you what our text says, and it's a mess up on the, on the screen, but our capital investment for the calendar year of 2024 is $534 million, $534,750,000. This is the second highest capital investment ever in a year in Greenwood County. For the six projects that we announced investing that amount, they're creating 560 new jobs and also retaining 43 jobs. So, 603 jobs created and retained is the highest in 18 years. And that's as far back as we've got the records on 18 years going back. Those six projects are three existing industries, three new companies, and a breakdown of industry sector. We have three manufacturers, one distribution, one commercial project, and one solar project that make up those six. That one commercial project is the largest mixed-use development in Greenwood County's history. It's on Lake Greenwood. We're going to have a chance to talk more about it. So, those are the statistics that make up these, these six announcements. These are in chronological order, and all of them happened in the last four months of last year, starting with E.S. Foundry in August of 2024. E.S. Foundry just celebrated their grand opening and ribbon cutting this past Friday. Several of our county council members attended that ceremony, and our vice chairman brought remarks at that event. They're investing $37 million in hiring up to 500 people at their solar cell manufacturing operation that is in pea plants on the former campus of Fuji Film. That campus has seen many evolutions of technology, and this is the most recent going into solar cell manufacturing. Those are the cells that go into solar panels, so they ship out from, from here and will be assembled into solar panels. Park Seed was the next expansion. That was announced in September. J&amp;P Park Incorporated is a portfolio of brands which many of us know as Park Seed. J&amp;P Park relocated one of their acquired businesses, Northern Brewer, from Minnesota to the Park Seed campus here in Greenwood. That's a $750,000 investment that will create 50 new jobs. And I'll tell you, that job number could go as high as 100. They are adding on a warehouse on the Park Seed campus where they will store refrigerated, refrigerated hops for home brewing and home brewing equipment. And I wanted to tell you a bit about each of these projects and the extra effort that goes into these, more than just the standard site location process. We've talked through that funnel and how we get leads and win projects. And I wanted you to know for, for Park Seed, that took getting the CEO of the company in Minnesota on the phone with the deputy commissioner of South Carolina Agriculture and helping them understand what the requirements are for a retail food establishment permit, getting into, or they direct to consumer sales. Is it refrigerated? Is it perishable? And if it weren't for those direct executive level connections, then we would not have Northern Brewer located here in South Carolina, understanding the regulations and being able to, to meet those regulations here. And E.S. Foundry, I want to tell you, that was a competitive site location project, and we were one of three southeastern states competing for, for that project. That took multiple site visits with the president, the CEO, who was here for the grand opening this past Friday. Casting Cleaning Resources came after the J&amp;P Park expansion, and that was in October of this past year. Casting Cleaning Resources was already in Greenwood County. They were co-located inside of Caterpillar's facility. They needed additional space, so they acquired a building on Airport Industrial Road where they will relocate their operations. That outfit is underway. They're investing $5 million in creating 42 new jobs. That is where the retained and 43 jobs came from on the previous slide. So, they'll have a total of 85 people at their new facility on Airport Industrial Road. So, we're glad to retain that agreement county and see them expand. They, they provide service to Caterpillar, their, their bulls at the Foundry at Cat Hodges. Then in December came the largest mixed-use development announced in the county's history. That's Old Eight. Old Eight, as you know, is a master plan mixed-use development that is going to turn Greenwood into a golf tourism destination for the state of South Carolina. They're investing $400 million and will create 103 full-time jobs. That will be, of course, a golf-centered development with world-class golf training at their training academy. The semi-point course renovation is already underway, and something a little extra that was required for that project wasn't little at all, but it was developed, a new development agreement and a new planned development district that was required to, to get Old Eight where they are on 540 acres on, on Lake Greenwood. And then in December, another announcement was Cardinal Health's expansion. They are increasing their production capacity. They are adding new equipment that will invest $30 million and create 12 new jobs at Cardinal Health. The Lieutenant Governor toured Cardinal Health, actually, in August of last year, did a little something extra for that project. I didn't tell you what, what there was extra with cast and cleaning, but there's something with every project, and that was another executive level conversation. This one was between Casting Cleaning Resources CFO and the South Carolina Department of Revenue, and actually getting the revenue, the property tax assessed with the Department of Revenue into the Caterpillar facility, which took approvals from two companies to make that happen, for them to actually see what casting cleaning does for those services that provide Caterpillar, to help them understand the tax classification as a manufacturer or as a service provider, which has tax implications. That was a little something extra required for each one of those six projects that we announced in 2024. And all of those are a part of the growth that we have seen since the inception of county economic development in August of 2020. You see the cumulative capital investment and job creation, over, over $1.4 billion and over 1,200 new jobs added to Greenwood County. And a photo there from the E.S. Foundry grand opening, and our vice chairman, state representative and mayor, with the president of E.S. Foundry, who I mentioned a moment ago. Have our economic development staff here today. Abby Banks will speak to you in a minute. Billy Weller, our public information officer, and Billy Ray Morgan, our project manager and assistant to AME. Billy is the one who fills out all the requests for information that come into our office. There was 51 of those that he answered in 2024. In addition to those, he completes six property searches, and that funnel I talked about for lead generation and economic development, RFIs come in to county economic development from the state department of commerce or other sources. And the idea is we get those companies here for a visit so that we can sell them on Greenwood. Six companies visited Greenwood last year, and that is, some of those visits were by E.S. Foundry coming to the former Fuji Film campus. We brought in state officials, utility partners to be with them and understand how a single tenant campus was going to be redeveloped as a multi-tenant campus, what that meant for them. The timing of, the timing of that grand opening really couldn't have been better, coming just days after the last production at Ascend Performance Materials. Of course, that closure was announced in 2024, in October, and within a day, we had meetings with the site director, we had, you know, workforce plan to have dedicated job fairs for those exiting employees at Ascend, and we facilitated a direct connection between Ascend's site director and the general manager at E.S. Foundry. It's that connection that led many of those Ascend employees who were still seeking jobs to gain employment at E.S. Foundry. So, Ascend stopped production on January 29th. January 31st, E.S. Foundry has a grand opening. Ascend had a farewell for their employees, nice event, on February the 1st. And then on February the 3rd, some, some employees from Ascend who were, who had completed their work had already gone to E.S. Foundry, others who stayed until the last day of production left a job at Ascend on Wednesday of last week and walked into a new job on Monday of this week. We had, we had some endings in 2024 for legacy businesses. We had new beginnings in Greenwood County as well, and those we celebrate so that we can continue celebrating new beginnings in the county where we continue to build our inventory of industrial sites. In 2024 alone, we executed 13 option agreements controlling a total of 781 acres. We have 17 options in effect currently, including those 13, publicly controlling over 1,600 acres, and that is in five industrial parks in the county. I'm going to touch on what's happening with each one of these parks. The last time I spoke with you about phase two of the North Greenwood Industrial Park, I didn't have a visual behind the scenes. I did my best to describe it to you, so today I have a visual and lay out for you what we're going out for bid on in the next, in the next week or so. And that is for the construction of the next spec building that is here on, this is lot number one. First, let me orient you. This is DA Swing. This was the county's first spec building built from the 2016 capital project sales tax and the northern entrance. That is what is built. Everything else is what's coming next. Now, you see the proposed buildings there. So, this is all phase two, everything here. This is the new southern entrance that will be constructed, a next spec building, and then these two buildings will not be built as a part of our project. They will be padded out for a future building. They will be mass rated. This road, this internal roadway will be built and paved. That will be going out for bid. We'll get that pricing in in the next month, and in a, from the time we award a contract, all of that construction can take up to 16 months for grading all that, paving the roads and constructing the building. So, it will be 2026 when we have a finished building to show you at the North Greenwood Industrial Park. That's on Highway 25 near Hodges. Next, I'm going to move to the 96 Business Park on Highway 34. And this is one of three site certifications that we have in process currently, and that certification program is called Palmetto Sites. What you see outlined in yellow is what the county originally had optioned in 2022. And that was on the western half of the business park. And at the end of 2024, we had the opportunity to double the size of the park and expand our, our option to acreage, and that is what you see highlighted in red. So, we now have a 432-acre park in 96 Business Park where five to 10 new companies can locate. That is a work in progress. We will achieve that Palmetto Sites designation in the coming months, and we will, in fact, to council, present that certificate once we receive it from the Department of Commerce. Another industrial park we're developing is called Stonecrest Park. This is on Fennel Road going out to Highway 246. It's on both sides of the road, 371 acres. All of the due diligence has been completed on this site, and we are just about ready to receive the Palmetto Sites designation here. Check for ready means all that due diligence has been completed, that site consultants and their clients are looking for. Multiple companies have visited this site, and some of them have located in the state of South Carolina. And I'll tell you that it's, it's a game of attrition, and when those Volvo that's in North Charleston, South Carolina, looked at sites where Hyundai located near Savannah, Georgia, and Volvo came first. Volvo didn't choose the site, and now Savannah has Hyundai. Same thing is going to happen at this. Same thing is going to happen at this site and our other parks where a company visits here, ultimately chooses another location in the state. The next project may be a bigger, better project. We'll choose our sites. The third that is in certification process right now is the Hodges Corporate Park. This is where much of our effort was focused in 2024, expanding this park from approximately 200 acres to 500 acres. So we've added 300 acres on the south and the the western sides of the Hodges Corporate Park. This is also on Highway 25. And you see just above it is is Caterpillar and Quogue Palmolive, Green Fabricating, Cleveland. So I'll orient you. We have conducted the site and community readiness visits at that at that park. We have not done the due diligence yet on that park. That would be the next step to completing Palmetto Sites there in 2025. I was naming our economic development staff also want to celebrate the achievements of our departments personally and professionally in the last year. And that is Abby Banks, who's going to speak with you next, her graduation from Leadership Greenwood. Not only that, but earning her MBA from Landry University, and that was using Greenwood County's Tuition Assistance Program for our employees. She took advantage of that and had not one but two graduations last year. I was recognized as an under-40 star by the Greenwood Chamber of Commerce, thankfully. And Billy Ray earned his certificate for completing the Basic Economic Development Course at UNC Chapel Hill. That is a program of the International Economic Development Council. So each one of your economic development staff have completed professional development in this last year. And now I'm going to have Abby come to talk with you about all the work.
Yeah, we're going to shift from our economic development to our communications and our social media because I think it's important for for you to see that our messages are getting out and what kind of increase we've had in our following here. So if you look at the screen, you can see our impressions for 2024. We're at, you know, 3,800,000 impressions. In 2023, we're at 1,800,000. So 2 million more impressions in social media. So what that means is that any time our information appeared in somebody's newsfeed, so 3,800,000 times. That's not necessarily individual people who looked at it because you may see the same thing twice, but it showed up, you know, more, you know, almost 4 million times in people's news feeds across all four platforms. So I think that's, you know, a huge increase there. That's 104% increase in impressions in a year. Our engagement, engagement is going to be anytime that somebody interacts with our our media from a like or a comment. In 2023, we had 152,000 engagements, and we were up to 344,000 in total engagement. And also, our followers increased greatly in 2024. Across all of our platforms, we had 9,903 in 2023, and that was up to almost 14,000 in 2024. You know, I'm incredibly proud of that because I think it's hard to grow a government following. We're going to talk about why that increase happened, but very pleased when I see those numbers. Again, our impressions increased by over 104%. Engagement, 126%. Again, that's getting people involved in what they see and clicking and doing, you know, clicking through links and seeing things. We had a 321% increase in video views, and that's because we produce more videos. You know, we have staff who's willing to take part in them, council, you are willing to participate in videos as well. And those are getting seen, and people are getting used to watching those. So I think that speaks highly of our staff and of you guys for wanting to participate in those and seeing those increased video views. And we had a 55% increase in just the number of posts that we typically publish. I want to spotlight specifically our Helene response because I think when my position was created, one of the most important things is you have a public information officer that is available in case of emergency. Last July, I was selected for FEMA's Executive PIO Program. And I was a little worried when that program started that I wouldn't have any experience in an EOC, and when I'd get in it, somehow I'd be behind. But we had Helene, so she took care of all of that.
Yeah, we fixed that for you.
Fixed that. So it's probably just for me to get some experience here. But I want you to see how essential it is. If somebody ever wonders if if a government or a municipality needs a PIO, this is ultimately the reason that you can set forth and show what that is. These numbers are just for that two-week period that's up there, the two weeks. That's the day Helene hit to two weeks after. And if you can look at, we had 1,700,000 impressions in just that two-week period. I mean, it's like a 2,000% increase from what we would have had in the two-week period before. Our engagements were 193,000. Again, that is, you know, a 50, you know, 505,000% increase from the two weeks before. So people were engaging, they were seeing post clicks. That means when I say post clicks and we have 2,500 post clicks, that's people clicking through those links and reading the data that we put in there. And that's hard to get people to do. People don't like to click on anything. So we've had people clicking through those post links. We had 2,400 new followers just in that two-week period, which is a significant number. But one thing I was often told is that when you have an emergency or you have some sort of event like this, you're going to have a lot of new followers. But just keep watching. All of those are going to fall off afterwards because people will unfollow, they won't want to see that. But we've been really lucky that we've been able to retain those numbers. We haven't lost a massive amount from what we gained right there in Helene, and they're continuing to follow and get information. And they understand that they can go to our social media for the quickest information about Greenwood County. 652 total messages sent during that time. So that seems like an incredibly high number. But what that is, is those are going to be messages from what I posted or from what I responded to during that two-week period across all four platforms. But you can just think about some of those initial days. We may have had 20 posts across all four platforms in just one day. We were just constantly pushing out information so that we make sure our citizens knew what they were doing and where to go and just give them assurance that we we had everything under control while we were taking all the steps possible we needed. During that time, we received 16, over 1,600 messages, and those are going to be either comments or people replying, clicking on our posts, replying to our posts, and just giving us back information. So people were engaged, they were reading, they were responding, they were asking questions. And again, they understood that this is where they could come to get information. Our engagement rate at that point was 10.9%. And I want to do a little deep dive on that engagement rate because it doesn't sound like it's a massive deal when you talk about engagement rate and you think, oh, almost 11%. Well, that's 11, almost 11% of the people who saw our messages engaged with it in some way or another, if that's from clicking like to comment or to share. These numbers that I've got up here, average government engagement rates from Q4 of 2024. And actually, those numbers are probably a little bit higher than they normally are only because of Helene and other events that were measured in just total government engagement rates. But across LinkedIn, it's 3.9%. LinkedIn is always going to be a little bit higher just because the people who are involved in LinkedIn are looking for jobs and they're engaging in information. On Instagram, 3.1%. Facebook, which is our largest community, is 2.8%, and then on X, 1.8%. So to have an engagement rate of 10.9% is a really big deal. And it shows that our citizens understood where they could go for information. They were reacting, they were getting it. It wasn't just something they were scrolling past. You look at those impressions, and we had a lot of impressions. But again, it wasn't just information people were scrolling past. They were utilizing that information, and they were reading it, and it was giving, directing them to make the best decisions for themselves. And finally, this is just some, you know, often on social media, we don't get the positive comments and accolades, I guess, or the response that we get. Oftentimes, we only hear from people when they are kind of upset with things. But these are just some of the highlights that people people commented on our posts, just regular information posts where people were happy. I think one of the best things, somebody says, these regular updates have been thorough and helpful. Kudos to the county for this work. And I think that was, at the end of each day, I would do a recap of every post that that went out that day so that people could have like one central place to get a storm center update, and those really benefited people, and we got lots of compliments on that. So I wanted you to know that people are seeing this information, they are taking it, taking it to heart and reacting with it when we do it. And it makes a difference in what we do. So I appreciate the opportunity to share that with you. I appreciate having a council that's willing to get involved and is willing to get in front of the camera with me and do that because all of this is because of the work that you guys do as well. Any questions for James or I?
No, but I have a comment. Surprise, surprise. You know, James, I'm reminded now that, how many years have you been in your position now?
With the county?
Yes, four years. And I'm reminded that in the first year, we surpassed, we set a lot of goals, you working alone in the first year. And now, the figures that you shared with us just a few minutes ago are remarkable. The whole team has done a remarkable job. If if I tossed all of the accolades that you guys, that I'd like to, we'd be here on midnight. And obviously, we don't want to be here for midnight. But I do have one question. In 2024, August, September, October, December, what the heck happened in November?
Yeah, we missed a month. We missed a month. We couldn't time it. Those two fell in the last month of the year, but those were.
Seriously, great, great work, outstanding work. I mean, you're leading us in a wonderful direction. Greenwood County is growing.
Can you tell James that he has to have an even number of announcements going forward so that it looks better when we put it on the slide for you? So we should add that.
And and Abby, your job, I mean, we had a lot of discussion on council our call about hiring a public information officer. Mr. Templeton and I kept banging on that drum. I think everybody in this room now will say, Mr. Templeton and I were right, weren't we right?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you. And Chairman, I do want to recognize Billy Ray's efforts in this department as well. Something else that occurred in 2024, of course, was the Capital Project Sales Tax. One of the added responsibilities that Billy Ray had was assembling our applications for the economic development projects, gathering all that information that ultimately led to two of those projects passed on the referendum being approved, and that is for additional upgrades at the North Greenwood Industrial Park, almost $3 million there, and about a $7 million project to make upgrades at the South Greenwood Industrial Park, which was not one of the parks that I had pictured on there because it's already completed the site certification. Those will bring necessary improvements to recruiting industries to those sites. This is a multi-year, multi-person effort to to lead to those results and those announcements that we'll look forward to reporting more on a few soon.
Yeah, we had many discussions about the value that Billy Ray would bring and and really taken some load off of you in doing that. And I said, your team, so I wasn't omitting Billy Ray. Billy, thank you. But thank you, guys, all. That was remarkable work. Before before we move into the next presentation, I should have mentioned this a few moments earlier, and please bear with me for doing it now. We've changed up, council has has changed up a bit of how we make notification of our executive session matters that we we cover. You heard me say earlier that we did have action to come out, come out of executive session. But what I want, what I want the public to know is that heretofore, when when we would go into executive session, there was no video and audio recording of that portion. So what council has has decided to change, and we're going to do it right now, at every meeting going forward, I will ask the county manager to state for the public the reasons that we were in executive session, the reasons that we had need to go into executive session, and to the extent that he can can say, because some things sometimes we can't say, but to the extent that he can to cover that. So manager, if you would do that, please, at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. We entered into executive session for the following seven matters. One economic development matter pertaining to Project Piranha, three legal matters pertaining to Greenwood County employees assistance policy, building permits, and a special tax district near Highway 246 and Willett Road, one personnel issue pertaining to the Capitol Courts Office, and two real estate issues pertaining to property owned by the Greenwood CPW and property in the area of the Greenwood County Recreational Complex.
Thank you, manager. I appreciate that. And we'll move back into our presentations now. Our next presentation is our quarterly update on our investments, county investments from First Citizens Bank. And I think I see that Jared is here tonight. Jared, come on up if you will.
Yes, sir. Well, I got to say, I'm excited to have been able to see that piece. I feel like oftentimes I do get the the starting role in the meeting, so sometimes I don't get to see that that side of things. Something, a lot of, a lot of really positive things coming.
Yeah, we'll do your favorite sticky at the back of the agenda.
Yeah, I'm excited, but I would say I'm happy to do it. So I think you guys all have a copy there for everybody to search that on the screen. As usual, we will start with a little bit of review, economic review, then we'll go through your two particular portfolios relative to performance. If you, in your books there, if you want to go to page four, to the bottom left, page We always review this slide as it is probably the most relevant piece of economic data relating to your portfolios. But today, it looks a little different than than it typically has and all the other times we've had time with you because it is doing something that we haven't seen it do yet. And that is starting, it's starting to normalize in the way in which you would expect to see a yield curve. Most of us would expect, whether we're thinking about a bond or a CD, that the shorter the term, probably the lower the rate that you might be able to get for it for a long time. We've had an inverted yield curve. Looking on your page, the bottom, the brighter blue is is what we're referring to there. On the left side of the chart, you got one, three, six month, and then one-year treasuries, all returning better than anything past the two-year mark. That's 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 not the the natural way that it should work, but of course, we've had some varying economic times in the past couple of years. But that bright blue would represent last year, early last year, before the Fed started started cutting. The dark blue is a little further down the line in the year, so you can see things starting to take a more levelized shape. And then the gold is how we ended 2024. And that is as close to a healthy yield curve as we've been in in a couple of years, I would say. The only thing really left to make that better would be to have the shorter terms start coming down as well. You can still see that the one, three, and six months are all still elevated above the one year. We want that obviously to come down. When, we were originally supposed to be here a couple of weeks ago. Naturally, the the snow and ice kept myself and Neil away. But on that day as well, the Fed didn't eat, and and they chose to to hold ground. They didn't reduce again. The expectation is that, and we'll get a little more into this in a couple of slides, the expectation is one to two more cuts are expected before they're done. Those cuts are what ultimately will bring that short end of the curve down. So hopefully, whether it's the next time we see each other in April or maybe the one after that, we'll have a fully functional yield curve. That's our hope, but we'll see what the the overall economy gives us otherwise. Also, you know, this data here is as of December. I double-checked again before I came in today. And on the gold line being the the end of 2024, everything is almost exactly where where that stood then today as it relates to rates. So we still have a little bit of an elevated front end of the curve. But like I said, the next time the Fed gets together and reduces, we'll we'll expect that to start looking a little more normal. If you flip the page, page five, these are a few updates, some things that we saw as the year closed. I'd highlight the the interest rate, funds fed rate, the your kind of bottom left-hand box there. Today, it's about 4.3. Towards the end of the year, it's roughly four and a half. There is a terminal number of roughly 3.9 as our expectation as to once, once you're, once they're getting to 3.9, they're going to feel like the economy really should take over from there and start normalizing whatever hasn't hasn't come from then. And then the other one I'd highlight on the bottom right, recession probability. This is, this is no small thing. For a long time, we talked about soft landings and working through, and the Fed being able to work through any kind of monetary policy that would push us in a direction where everything could could stay normal, we wouldn't necessarily need to see a big, a big drop. So beginning last year, that was a 50% probability. It's kind of a, you know, a toss-up essentially. But now it's 25%. So we are getting closer and closer to that being reality. And again, that's, if you would watch the news this time last year, that was obviously a very big topic, as it should be. So glad to see that moving in in a positive direction. Two, if you flip two more, we'll end with a little bit about the Fed. As I mentioned, As I mentioned, expectation is that 3.9, actually, I'm going to go back one page. I did want to show you this, this one slide relative to inflation problems. Bottom should be page six. So this, this, I think, is an, is an interesting slide. We have not used this price index in the past, but it, it could be, it could be an answer to why we hear a lot of folks say that, you know, inflation's coming down. I'm not feeling that, right? We hear that a lot. The dotted line represents the consumer price index. The CPI is what most people measure as to buying power. Strategius has created an index called the Common Man Price Index, which is a little more relevant to everything that we interact with, with our dollars, every, every person. And so those things, they include very specifically are relative to childcare, children's clothing, food, insurance, things that literally every person that is in an ownership position potentially of, of assets is going to experience. And so you'll see that that's more elevated than the CPI. Big picture, inflation has had, a lot of the work's been done to inflation, there's still work to be done. The Fed would like to see a closure to 2%. So again, with their cuts, the expectation is that that will continue to drop. That, but that is their, their big picture goal and something they put in all their commentary after the meetings. And the next page is relative to the Fed's meetings. Like I mentioned before, so the dark blue, the first dark blue box end of 2024, there was a cut there. Again, there was not one in January. Expectation is one to two more. It could be zero. Most of, if you were to look at a Bloomberg terminal, you're probably, you're probably looking at two, is what most economists are, are suggesting, but, you know, the expectation of one is also pretty high, too. So zero to two more cuts, again, I think that they're going to allow, because they didn't make a cut in January, it's pretty clear that they're gonna, they're gonna see if the, the economy can get this done for them without needing to intervene. But should things not continue to progress, it's very likely that we could see one in the next, next couple of months. So that I'll pause on economic review, and we'll do a quick rundown of current yields in the portfolios. Any questions on that piece?
Any questions, council?
All right.
So if we want to go, flip to page 12. This is the electric capital fund. Again, we, we've talked a couple of times about kind of when the week is over, getting things back to the requested duration for the portfolio. You'll see on that top left hand of your bar chart there, there still is one small little piece that's a little further out than we would like, but that should roll off relatively soon. But this is also the, the account that it was decided could go out a little further. Money that can sit for a little bit longer and hopefully lock in some interest rates to the benefit of the portfolio while they're hot. So we did, certainly did that then. That's going to continue to, to show itself out as the Fed continues to drop rates. So yield maturity on that particular one, 4.36%, which is a solid, a solid, a solid posting, given that, like I said, a fair amount of that is going to stick around. We expect rates to continue to come down a little bit more, and you guys will have made that decision at a very good time when, when rates were, were probably at their best. Tough to say for sure, but very close to being the best time to make that call. So that's electric. If we want to flip to page 22 in your bottom left, we'll finish off looking at the operating fund. This one should be pretty squarely into targeted duration on that top left chart. Yield to maturity here, very close, 4.32%. Naturally, we expect it to be a little bit lower with the, with the shorter duration in electric capital. But yeah, I think, I think that we have gotten both these portfolios really where you guys wanted them as it relates to the investment policy outline. But with that, 4.36 for electric, 4.32 for operating, again, both solid postings, both of which will be a hang-on to that as, as interest rates continue to change. So any questions on kind of the portfolio build, performance measures? Again, we don't, we can go deeper, but I think often kind of the yield maturity tells you a good story.
Council, any questions, comments?
I have one question. Thank you so much. This is really more probably for the county staff to remind me about the electric capital fund.
Yes.
I know there is some money that's set aside for a particular reason, the principal versus the, the earnings, the income. What is that for, the intended purpose of the electric capital?
You want the whole history or you want the short version?
Short version. It'll be, I'll, I'll come back to you.
Many years ago, in the 50s, I believe, maybe earlier than that, the county sold the electrical rights to a utility provider, and this is the principal for that number. The county has to attain the principal indefinitely, but, but are able to spend the interest that is derived. And if I'm wrong, Dr. Dorn will correct me.
No other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, kind of a comment.
Sure.
Can you guys in the future, and maybe I'm missing it, but like, well, this page 12, I want to see where it says this is for the electric trust line.
Yeah, it actually is. It's small, it's on the page ahead of that. It does turn on that particular one. And I, I could, I could see if I can work with their formatting.
Yeah, that'd be great, because if we ever get asked, for example, you know, tell us about the legacy trust, if we just had this one page that we could give to someone, that may be helpful.
Yep, absolutely. We can do that.
Jared, thanks for being with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is update on our progress of the Hurricane Helene debris removal. Rob Rush and our Public Works Director will give that. Thank you, Rob.
Appreciate you all having me here tonight. We are four months out, just over four months out from Hurricane Helene. There's a lot of return to normalcy in the county, but we're not quite there yet. Wanted to give an update tonight, and that one, some of the great questions I've picked up out in the community about where we're at. I'll go through a little bit of that, and we'll also talk about the landfill, where kind of it stands as well in relation to the, to hurricane. So first thing I want to say is the time has passed the hurricane debris at the curb, all right? The last couple of updates we had, we told people, get it out there, get it out there. The time has passed to put it out there. All hurricane debris should be at, if you have any additional hurricane debris that you're clearing from your property, whether it's a resident or whether you've hired a contractor to do it, it should be brought directly to the landfill, okay? So the time to put it out of the curb has passed. I, I will, I will say that DOT published a date quite some time ago that wasn't heavily published throughout the community. They have given some grace past that date. They have picked up a lot of stuff that has been out at the curb, but the time to put it out there has passed. Any new debris that you're clearing from your property or had leftover, whether it's you or a contractor, should be taken directly to the landfill. We are still not, we have still waived fees for the landfill so they can be brought to the landfill at no charge. As council knows, both the city and the county have contracted with DOT. DOT has put in the contractor to clear the roads on both state, city, and county maintained roads. So roughly 90% of the roads are being picked up and cleared by the DOT contractor, okay, that we partner with. DOT estimates 75 to 80% of the total debris that was out there has been collected, all right? So we are well beyond halfway. We, we only have 20, 25% left. The bad news is there's 20, 25% left out there, and the people who haven't had the debris picked up yet are starting to get worried that it's not going to be picked up. I will tell you that DOT is now targeting the end of February for completion of debris pickup in this county. We have heard, you know, in the past, the end of January was a target at one time. As we get closer to the end here, they get more accurate where that end date will be, they are targeting the end of February as when their contractor will be complete picking up debris in the county. There's a lot of difficult debris left out that hasn't been picked up. You see a lot of our trees that need to be cut still on the ground. You see root balls out there. There are different contractors out there doing different things. We're getting a lot of calls right now, well, contractor came through and picked up 90% in our, in our neighborhood, but they left these big trees and these root balls. Different contractor, different equipment is going to come and pick up a different type of debris. So there is a lot of that difficult debris out there. I will tell you that from day one, there was two humongous pine trees right across the entrance from the landfill. Of course, we cleared all our, our landfill property on our side of the road, but there were true, two trees right across from the entrance. There was a crew out there today cutting up those trees. Very difficult, large trees. They were cutting up those trees and hauling them off today. So some of those very difficult debris pickup is, is a lot of what's left out there. There are still some small areas that have not been touched yet. You know, there's some, some small dentin' roads, some, some portions of some of the subdivisions where contractors not been on there. One of the, one of the questions we're getting a lot of right now is, my road's not on your list. It's not on the list. It's been skipped. I, I guarantee you, every road in this, every county maintained road, every city maintained road, every DOT maintained road was on the list for the DOT contractor. We are currently addressing that, and I'll talk a little bit more about that here in a minute. So what if you still have debris in front of your house, all right? If you are in the city, and, and again, I want to speak from the city, the city, the state, the county, we've all kind of, we're on kind of diverging paths at this point as we finish up this process. But the city has put out some great information on their social media. They have an online form. They're asking city residents only to fill out that form so they can identify where the debris piles are left within city limits, okay? I would ask residents, if you get anybody from the city who asks you about it, encourage them to go online, fill out that form. If they're not the online person, they can call the city and get that information input through the city, okay? So if you're in city limits, they encourage you to fill out that form. Privately maintained roads, if you live on a privately maintained road in this county, that's about 9% of the total road network. Those have been cleared, all right? If you live on a privately maintained road and still have debris in front of your house, give us a call at our Public Works number. It's on the screen right there, you know, and we'll handle that, that part of it. I put both county maintained road and DOT maintained roads up at the same time. That is 85% of the roadway mileage that's out there. If you live on a county maintained road or a DOT maintained road, and you still have a pile of debris in front of your house, you do not have to do anything at this time, okay? You don't need to call us. We have staff out there running through the roads, inspecting the roads, noting all the piles that are left out there, all right? And then we're forwarding that information for the contractor to do final push, the final pickup in these areas and make sure all these piles are being cleaned up, okay? We are also out there clearing roads at this time. We go down a road, and it is found to have not any debris left on it at all. We are inspecting that it's been cleared as of this date. And again, some other normal process can begin after that. But if you still have storm debris in front of your house, you live on a county maintained road, DOT maintained road, you do not need to call us at this time. We are getting an awful lot of calls right now that are just, I spelled debris on from us. Yes, you're part of the 20, 25% that's left out there that's yet to be cleaned up. We are getting to you, and we are expecting where those piles are remaining out there, okay? If you're on a state maintained road, again, you don't have to do anything, but I put a different number up there for a state maintained road. Someone calls us by a state maintained road, we tell them that, you know, we're still working on it, but we also can give them their DOT's number if they still want to speak with DOT. All right. One of the biggest questions we're getting from the public right now is what happens after DOT contractors leave? Well, city, the citizens of this county are in luck because whether you're in the city or whether you're in the county, we still have vegetated pickup services in both those areas, all right? The city has a program to pick up debris. The county has our normal leaf and limb, curb side service that will resume once the, once the hurricane debris has been cleared. The issue with the normal service is we are not going to pick up root balls and large trunks and everything. Those should be picked up by the contractor, should be cleared before the contractor leaves. If we have some individual small areas, we will address them as needed, but we have normal leaf and limb service. On roads that we have already cleared, we have already begun some normal leaf and limb service. People are starting to put out and getting back to normal, putting out the hedge clippings and some. We have already started that normal leaf and limb service on roads that we have cleared as being cleared of storm debris, okay? So we see a lot of regular vegetated debris going back out there. We're working on that. Those are the current requirements for our normal leaf and limb operations in the county. Single-family residents only, one pile per residence per month, leaves need those, small clippings must be bagged. Look at the size, the size is six inches in diameter, four feet in length. That's, that's small. Now, we do give a lot of grace on that. If it's something our equipment can pick up, we do pick it up, but seven cubic yards or less, that is much smaller than a lot of the storm debris piles are out there. So once we go back to normal leaf and limb service, that's our curb requirements. At our next meeting, I plan on bringing back a revised policy that puts all of our both written and kind of unwritten policies that we followed for years in a single policy for council to discuss and eventually pass going forward. But it's time that we kind of review it. Our current curb side policy is from 2004. It needs, 20 years old, needs to be updated. And then the policies that we have are convenience standards. A lot of those are unwritten, unwritten policies that we followed over the years are internal policies that wasn't necessarily a pass by council, approved by council, okay? So again, we have some, some resources after the debris is cleaned up to handle our normal stuff. I want to give just a landfill update real quick to kind of show you where we're at. Since the hurricane, we have picked up 29,952 tons, or we have accepted, I'm sorry, accepted 900, 29,950 tons of vegetated debris. If we were to charge a normal rate of $26 a ton, that's a value of 778,000 plus, okay? We have, we have accepted 500, 5,124 tons of construction debris free of charge. If we were to charge our $45 a ton that we would normally charge, that's 230,580. Those two numbers together is over a million dollars worth of vegetated debris and construction debris that we have accepted at the landfill free of charge. That is a million dollars. My normal operating budget in the year is a little over $4 million. I take in a little over $2 million at the scale house every year. That is a large amount of debris and, and scale house fees that we have waived, okay? It's a large amount. I bring that up because the landfill operates as an enterprise fund. We have waived a lot of our fees bringing in this material. We still have to handle it. We still have to grind it. We still have to, a lot of it will end up in our landfill and take up space in our landfill. That space is expensive. We're going to see how expensive here in a minute when we talk about the bids that came in for the landfill expansion, but that space is expensive, and we are, that's a lot of material that come in to the landfill for free. I just want to make council aware of that at this time.
Rob, can I hesitate just one second, ask a question? I understand that that's a million dollars of lost revenue, but what percentage increase is that? Because in a normal year, it would have, had we done the same thing, waived fees, in a normal year, what would that, what would that cost have been?
So to give you, to give you an idea, in a normal year, we only take in about two, about 10,000 tons of vegetated debris. So that's a third of that. Normally, we'd bring in 250,000 of vegetated debris in a year's time, and we would bring, and it's construction debris, it's a little, it's hard to, to, you know, we're bringing in maybe 20, 30,000 tons of, of, of construction debris in a year. So that, and that is almost all charged, you know, with, with contract stuff like that. So it's, it's a considerable amount. But total that we bring in the landfill in a year at the scale house now is, is 2.1 million around.
Okay.
It's a little hard because it's over and above what we normally do. But it's still using resources and it's taking up space. And the space is really the expensive part of the landfill. When you build a cell, you, you build space out there to fill with trash. And when you fill that space, there's a cost to it. So while it's not costing us a million dollars in actual operating space, it, it's, it's not that far from it because we operate as a break-even enterprise out there. So when we charge that amount, that amount just breaks us even in what we're, what we're doing out there. We continue to see about 34 trucks a day, 136 tons a day of hurricane debris. That's the average over about the last three weeks. So we're still getting, you know, a good amount of debris in there. It's not the 2, 3, 400 trucks that we were getting, but we are still seeing a steady amount of debris. amount of debris coming in. Again, the landfill's still accepting hurricane debris free of charge. We are still only accepting hurricane debris at the landfill. If we have any hope for FEMA reimbursement, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute, but if we have any hope for FEMA reimbursement, it's got to go over scales. It's got to be put in its own place. It's got to be recorded. We start putting it in other places and we lose that ability to try to reclaim that or some of that cost from FEMA. Again, Monday through Friday, 7 to 4, Saturday, 8 till noon is our landfill operating hours. Our convenience centers are accepting non-hurricane vegetated debris. We started accepting that back beginning in January. You can take the clippings, your bushes and all, you can take them out of convenience centers. We're back in a normal schedule with that. One pickup truck load a day, that's an unwritten rule we have. We'll bring it to council next week to kind of codify that. This is a graph of our vegetated debris and number of trucks that we've gotten from the hurricane. You can see prior to the hurricane, this area in here, this is how many trucks we're getting a day. We have the hurricane, we jumped way up here, and then we slowly come down to where we're, you know, like I said, 34 trucks a day. We're probably getting 25 trucks a day prior to hurricane. We do have a little bit of blip here at the end. I'm a little bit concerned about those, last week, we had a couple days, but that's up to yesterday. That's the number of trucks. Here's our weight in tons, and this is a little bit, it shows you the changing dynamic. In the beginning, we had a lot of customers, but very small amounts of weight as individuals bring material in. As we transition over this time, it's been more contractors, larger loads, heavier loads. And then again, we have this little blip here this, last week, that I'm a little bit concerned about that it's picking back up. I'm hoping that's a little bit of an outlier as we try to finish off some stuff. It may be an indication of DOT bringing in some outside forces. I need to get in that data a little bit more, but we'll work on that. But again, the tons have not dropped. So, we're getting less trucks, but they're bigger trucks with more debris on it. The bigger contractors are bringing in some of the bigger stuff at this time. So, landfill summer. Landfill's getting close to getting back to normal from a truck yet. We're not, we're not there yet. We still have more trucks than normal, but we're not quite there yet. What is extremely concerning to me, and this is outside of the numbers I gave you previously about how much we've accepted for free, is that before the hurricane, we were averaging a daily amount, a daily revenue at the scale house of over $9,000. Post hurricane, our average daily revenue at the scale house has dropped $1,000 a day. Every day that we're operating now, we're bringing in $1,000 less. If you count that back to the hurricane, our revenue's down $108,000 over that period of time since the hurricane, four months. So, we're losing, what we had budgeted for this year is down, is down $108,000 over four months. Okay? That's concerning because all of our numbers are set on a break even and it's, it's a, now, where are we losing it? A lot of it's in debris. When your contractors, when your landscapers, when every landscaper in town is not trimming bushes and cutting trees and bringing that to you, when they're working on hurricane debris, which is what everybody with a truck and a chainsaw is doing right now, they're doing hurricane debris instead. They're bringing that hurricane debris for free. We're missing out on what would be our normal revenue for normal lawn maintenance, normal lot clearing, that sort of thing, because all those contractors are doing everything. So, that $108,000 is not, revenue loss is not reimbursable from FEMA. The million dollars that we talked about earlier, we are working to get reimbursed for FEMA. I'm becoming more and more pessimistic every day as we deal with FEMA and get into the heavy applications, whether, how much of that million dollars we're going to be able to recover. So, hopefully, it's a good percentage of it, but it's, I don't think it's going to be all of it at this point. So, how much do we cover there? How much do we lose in space and operating? But that lost revenue is a direct cost that's going to hit my budget regardless of what FEMA does with reimbursement. Okay? That is a realized revenue loss for us that it's going to be tough to overcome by budget here. So, the one thing I'd like council to consider tonight, maybe have some discussion and would love to see a vote, is when do we stop, stop accepting hurricane debris for free? All right? At this time, we are suggesting March 3rd, which is the first business day in March. March 1st is on a Saturday. The first business day in March is a Monday. It's March 3rd. It's at that point that we would like to start charging again. I think it will roughly coincide with DOT's contractor finishing cleanup on the roads and we can kind of put a button on the whole thing and start charging again for herp, for vegetated debris at the landfill come March 3rd. Want to hear council's thoughts on it? Again, we have some substantial financial losses out there. I know that we want to help the citizens out of this county and getting this hurricane. At that point, it'll be five months since the hurricane. When we originally said to clean up, three to six months, we're in that, we're in that range, due to five months. Again, we'll coincide hopefully with DOT finishing up their work of picking up their debris and kind of put a button on the whole thing. So, wanting to hear council's thoughts on that date as a date that we reinstate the fees for hurricane debris as it comes into the landfill. And this would be the only debris that a resident in themselves hauls into the landfill or a contractor hauls into the landfill. Now, under the policies that I'm going to put before you next week, a single resident brings a load of vegetated debris, they can go to any one of our convenience centers and dump a truckload for free. So, this would be above and beyond that, you know, essentially a truckload a day from a resident, a pickup truckload a day from a resident. Beyond that is when we would charge or any contractor doing work that brings it to the landfill, we also charge and we would go back to that policy of charging for any residential debris that's more than a pickup truckload a day or a contractor who's doing work out there, vegetated debris that they bring into the landfill regardless if it's hurricane debris or not.
Can you go back to this slide about the activity level? Where you're showing how it had tapered off. Okay, here, yeah.
That is, again, we have, you know, in the peak, we're, before the hurricane, you're somewhere in the 25 truck, truckloads a day of vegetated debris that's coming in. We hit the hurricane and we just go crazy, you know, 200, 250 trucks a day. We're trending down. By the end of next month, I think that's going to be at normal levels or closer. We continue to go down. Again, we have this little blip here at the end. I think that's, you know, these three days in here are kind of up a little bit, four days in there are up a little bit. I think that's attributed to something that'll finish at the end, which is DOT crews from other counties who are coming in and bringing material to us because they're not bringing it to the contractor's side. But that's, I think that's what that's from and I'm not. But again, that's a pretty good decline. I think a month from now, if you project that out, I think we're at normal levels.
And my other question is, is there any correlation between the, is there a deadline with FEMA?
Yes. So, and I will, whenever there's a disaster like this, there's a 90-day period that they give you where FEMA will pay 100% of the cost of debris cleanup. Okay? In our case, we kind of assumed that would start the day of the hurricane. It doesn't. The state set that and it started October 10th or 11th. Okay? So, they had an original 90 days from October 10th or 11th would take you to November, December, January. Then FEMA increased it from 90 days to 120 days. So, the 100% timeframe is getting ready to run out beginning of next week. So, all the debris cleanup that's done between October 10th and, and I know I'm getting into weeds here, October 10th through February 10th or so is eligible for 100% reimbursement from FEMA. Now, you got to, now, jump through, eligible. Before that date, the 10 days before that date, anything after that is only 75%. So, if we were to get full reimbursement for what it would be, anything after February 10th is only going to be 75% if we're able to get that full amount from FEMA. So, by March 3rd, you're in that 75% range anyway. So, everything, you're, you're definitely not getting 100% at that time. You're definitely getting at least that 25% cut if not more.
Council, anything else? Any comments, any other questions?
If we can get a decision from council on whether that's a good date, we will start to publicize it a full month before it happens and give people a full month. Now, when council waived those fees back in October, you did it by resolution. Talked to attorney a little bit, we can take a vote tonight, choose to reinstate fees. On March 3rd, we would come back at the next meeting, we'd start publicizing that date, we'd come back the next meeting and probably do a resolution to reinstate the fees. We don't have that resolution for you tonight.
Just doing the simple math, that would be notifying them yesterday. Okay. My personal lean is just a little bit more grace period. I was thinking March 31st take us to, or the end of March would take us to full six months just to give a little bit more grace to the residents to understand what's going on. Because even if we take action tonight, you know, you get into the rest of the week, you know, expecting you and Abby to get the word out, that's Dan's two cents on that subject.
Well, my counsel, we're losing, we're losing a thousand dollars a day. So, going from March 3rd to 31st, that's another, you know, $20,000 of lost revenue that would not be reimbursable under any case at the landfill.
Rob, thank you for that. I know it's been very challenging for your department. Thank you for all that information. Appreciate it.
Do you want to take a vote at all about that date? I mean, is there?
Is there anyone prepared to make a motion in regard to what Rob has requested?
I'm happy to make a motion. I mean, I like your numbers. I see the trend coming down. I think it's a valid point. It coincides with FEMA deadlines. So, I'm not sure how much traction that's going to get by the looks of my, my parts here. But I would like to make a motion to proceed with your recommendation that the fees would resume on March the 3rd. Is there a deadline issue though, this notification period? Or is that, you said that would have been yesterday or?
Yeah. Yeah, we're trying to give them a month notice, but.
But there's no legal reason we have to give a fourth.
Not my option.
Right, so yes, that would be my motion.
I'll second Ms. Miller's motion.
So, having heard that, counsel, we have a motion and a second. Do we all understand what we're voting on to go ahead and go back to our normal fee structure? Effective March 3rd. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes 3-2.
We'll start notifying the public and again, at next meeting, we'll bring back a legal and policy for council to discuss. And again, it'll be almost verbatim what we currently do, just getting it all into one policy for council to bless.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Our next presentation will be from County Engineer Rhett Templeton and Mr., is Jamie Smith here with you tonight? Jamie's not here, is he? Rhett, the update on Park Plaza renovation project. Thank you, Rhett.
Yes, sir. Thank you all. And unfortunately, Jamie was unable to be with us tonight on this. He's been a huge part of this and we started all our renovations and all that's been a large part that he's got and, you know. So, just to get started, we've got a nice kind of rendering picture of what we, can see that what we're calling the front of the renovated Park Plaza up there right now. I was kind of looking from the E-skill direction. That entryway is kind of where the stairway, stairs and elevator are now. So, that's kind of an idea of what we envisioned this looking like. Kind of giving you an update, where we are, the plans, we have gone through the, we're working on the design drawings with our architect. We are done one round of kind of just review, revision, let's say, the project team, that's us, B. John, our contractor is already on board with this, is also looking at it, asking questions, trying to make sure that they can build it the way it's designed. Make sure we're trying to look at cost and make sure we have the most cost efficient process we can afford. We've done one round of that. You know, we met internally with Jamie and myself, met with ITs to kind of look at all the systems in place. So, since we've gotten that first draft of review in, we're looking to get another set of design drawings back to this kind of meet with all the departments to make sure that, all right, this is going to work, this is what we need, so we can try to get that finalized design subset of drawings to get a final price from B. John. You know, we talked about, you know, how it looks. We met with their interior design team that is part of BP3. I've got some renderings that they've shared with us that I'll share in a moment, but that was an exciting part of kind of start to see this building starting to come to life. As far as the courthouse basement, that's, you know, part of the phasing of this process. We have several departments that are going to have to, they're going to be moving into the courthouse basement here soon. Jamie's got the bulk of the work done. He's got a few finishes that are, have to be completed. Painting's getting worked on this week, so that'll hook the wrap up this week. And then we have flooring and just some touch up work after that. But it's moving along very well. It's supposed to be finished up with it by the end of the month. Another part of that is I think we talked about bathrooms. There are four bathrooms that are going to be renovated as far as in the basement. I think two of those he plans to be done before that March timeline. That is certainly some of those bid out. I think the bids have come back in. We're in a protest period, but we'll hopefully make an award next week to get that project started. And those renovations are still on schedule. We've outlined now, coming in on budget. So, he's done a great job of keeping that project moving on budget, on time, and making sure that it's not a sinking point for us as we try to get to the overall project. Talked about moves, the other kind of thing we're looking at. I talked about the basement being completed, this is where departments are going to move from Park Plaza to the basement. It's the public fender, probation parole, maintenance services and the corner, and those are the spaces that Jamie's working on. We'll have to have some moves of the rest of the staff in Park Plaza that are looking at that being closer to late spring, early summer. Still trying to work out the details on that, so finalize some of those dates, see if we'll be, some of the updates you want as we have more information. Talk about the design plans, just kind of highlighted the lobby that we're excited about. Obviously, this is someplace that the public can come. All those departments over there, building, planning, engineering, late management, auditor, assessor, tax office, all those will be off of that lobby. So, if you need to come see those departments, you come in, you can get to, maybe just a few steps, you're a different counter and you can address those needs. More of a one-stop shop and kind of going up and down the stairs that we have, sometimes going between buildings that we have currently. So, I think it's going to be a much better service for our constituents. Talk about renderings, these are all the pretty pictures that we can see kind of how we're looking at. This is coming into the lobby, so as you're coming in the front stairs, this will be the first thing you see. Those stairs in front, you go to the second floor, then we have doors to access the, that lobby we just discussed. This is kind of what we made a vision, this lobby space looking at. You see the auditor, assessor, tax office there. This is kind of the same area to turn around, looking back into the building apartment to your right, tax office far left. This is a wall that they kind of said, you know, we can put different things that, you know, whether it's draw attention to for Greenwood County, we can have information there or just things that are interesting to know about the county. So, they see that as an opportunity to showcase Greenwood if we so choose. This is looking, I guess, just one floor up, kind of looking in that same direction that I pictured coming up the top of the stairs. And that green, those green, those are crucible panels, so they're kind of help with sound dampening. It also has kind of a, I guess it's got a look aesthetic as well, but they have a function there as well. Moving through that's one of our office spaces, kind of give you an idea of what they're seeing. But that, this is kind of a sample office they can lay out. So, they're trying to give us some ideas of what this is going to look like. Obviously, we'll continue to work through this and as this will progress, but this is going to give you all what we've gotten so far. As far as the renovations, we should have some, it's a construction zone down there, so we got, the pictures aren't, they're not cleaned up yet. I can't wait to actually go show the finished product. Jamie's worked really hard. These guys have been working really hard to get this finished, but he's made a lot of progress on this and it's going to work really well for the department's experience. So, it's something that we've been really excited about. And again, he's been on budget, on time, so it's been really, I'm going to brag to Jamie because he's just not here. Temporary office space, so we saw some departments, we have to talk about where they're going. So, we've looked at different things. I think when we first started talking about this project, we wanted to try to do a phased approach and to leave some departments in place, finish one floor, move them up, and it was a great plan. I'm happy, but when we started talking to the contractor and how it's going to work out, just the efficiencies lost and how much more expenses could be, it didn't make sense for us to do that. So, we can save a lot of money by getting those departments out, letting them work, renovate the building all at once. So, administration, HR, treasurer, economic development, registration all have to go somewhere. The proposal that we have, this is, this schematic is a sample of just, I guess, seven of just, I guess, seven job trailers that turn into offices and cubicle space that we would want to utilize for those additional staff. I think registration is one exception. I think they would be looking to go to a, a separate trailer with the amount of traffic they have and the voting processes that they'll have to go do. It'd make more sense to pull them off separately. So we've talked about two potential locations for that. This is something we're trying to work through. There's a note up there. We've sent it to the board of architectural review because this property is in the city overlay. So we're working with that on top of Carol. We've got the application in. I think we'll go see them in two weeks. So obviously, we'll report back once we've had that, that meeting. But on this drawing, this is the parking lot that is on the corner of Park and Edgefield. Courthouse would be over here where the specs is. Kind of idea, this is the law office, this is Park Plaza. This is hands over here at the library. So this is one location we can utilize. The parking lot is already paved, put all the spaces here. The other location, did not provide pictures for, not be utilizing this space that we own on this piece of property. So we've got some things to work out between the VAR, make sure addressing is addressed, making sure we don't have any issues with being able to find these locations. But we're gonna work through those problems and make the recommendation feel like it's best and work with our, obviously our staff and our contractor and, and architect on this. So any other questions I didn't cover?
Counsel, no questions, no comments. Rhett, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank y'all.
Sorry, my pages are stuck together. We have no old business to conduct. We'll move into our new business section. First order of new business, consideration of bids for the construction of cell number four in the Greenwood County landfill. Mr. Russian back with us.
So back when I moved into Public Works four and a half years ago, one of the first things that our county manager told me I needed to get on was construction of the new cell and the permitting process and everything that went along with it. Well, four and a half years later, we are finally at where we have received bids for construction. All permits are in place and we're ready to move forward. So obviously, we're currently in cell three. That disposal space is running out. We need to construct cell four if we wanna continue to take, provide trash disposal services in the county. We did go out with a formal RFP process. We did receive bids on the construction. I will tell you that through that formal RFP process, we dealt with a multitude of companies through the process, asking questions, answering questions. The, the actual bid document was over 500 pages long with associated construction drawings with it as well. There was a long list of requirements for this type of heavy technical project. Talk a little bit about funding first. We, we budgeted, a couple of years ago, we had a probable opinion of cost done. We budgeted eight point five million dollars in this current year for the construction alone. We budgeted another 385,000 for construction administration and quality insurance for a total of eight point eight eight five million dollars in total. I will tell you that the bids that we received and the additional work by our consultant exceeds that budget amount. We kind of knew that going into this budgeted year. We did not pay for an additional probable opinion of cost. We did do another probable opinion of cost this past December. And the bids did come in below that cost. So, but if staff does recommend approval bids, Dr. Dorn has prepared a budget resolution to cover the difference between what we have budgeted and what would be needed for this project. We did receive two bids, one from Shamrock Construction, one from Morgan Corporation. We were a little disappointed with two bids, but the numbers that were received from one of the bids, obviously, we're very happy with being within what we felt was a reasonable amount below the probable opinion of cost from our consultant. We, Lobella is our consultant for this project. Lobella, we did a RFQ a couple of years ago, chose them as the consultant for this project, and they've been working through the permitting process, the design, and now the bid for this project. So Lobella did our bid review. It was a very extensive bid review on both of these bids. There's a lot in there, a lot of flat that they had to submit. Shamrock was the low bid with a base bid of eight, eight million, six hundred twenty seven thousand, twenty five dollars and an alternate bid of nine million, one hundred thirty three dollars and 244, excuse me. The alternate bid, we had included a, a wind defender system, which is a system, when you check the landfill, there is, you essentially have to cover 12 acres with tarps for an extended period of time. And there is a, what they call a wind defender system that helps you keep those tarps in place and helps you keep compliant with DES while you start filling that, that cell. It could take more than a year with those tarps in place post-construction. So the wind defender system is something that was definitely recommended by the industry. And we put it in as an alternate bid. In addition, through the bidding process, we noted some concerns of construction companies with some material on site. We added some additional bid items in there for soil amendment if, if needed. Now, the alternate bid being at nine point, roughly nine point one million, we are recommending approval of that. But I will tell you that the basically, we don't expect to use that entire amount and that some of that cost is, will be as needed if current materials on site don't meet current specs. So it's a little bit complicated, but we are going with recommending the alternate bid at nine point one three three million. In the bid review, Lobella did note two issues with Shamrock's low bid. The first issue was one of the insurance requirements in their proposal, they failed to meet. So even when we signed a contract with them, we will need them to provide additional insurance coverage to meet our minimum requirements for that particular thing. So if you do approve it tonight, it'll be under the condition that they do meet all of our insurance requirements. It was an oversight along their parts that one of their insurance that they, it was just below what our minimum requirement was.
And what would be our fallback if they don't? Would we go back to Lobella?
Well, our fallback would be that we negotiate what that amount would be. And then, again, any approval you would give on that condition that they met that amount, we come back to council to see if you could accept that. But right now, it's with such, they, they plan on meeting that minimum insurance requirement as part of the bid. It was an oversight of their part.
Okay, thank you.
And again, we, we have 20 different insurance programs, all different numbers for all different types of insurance on this project. Just one of them was, was below what we asked. The second discrepancy with their bid is that in the bid package, we, there's a bid checklist sheet that should have been on the very front of their bid with each one of the individual items checked off. They did not provide a bid checklist sheet, but they provided every one of the items that was on the bid checklist sheet. It's a formality, again, a minor discrepancy we're noting in their bid. So again, they provided everything on that bid checklist sheet. So it's really just the one issue, the insurance that they will bring up to cover should we sign a contract with. We do recommend approval of the alternate bid at nine million, one hundred thirty three thousand, 244 dollars. In addition to that alternate bid of nine point one million, Lobella, who was our consultant, will be providing the construction administration. That's why we were meeting. There's a whole list of their scope for this project to help administer the project. Everything from verifying quantities, for pay items, for just all the administration part. In addition to that, there is an amount for quality assurance that is taking the testing that the company will do during construction. It's a very technical job, a lot of testing that goes on, and ensuring doing additional testing, additional samples to ensure that what the contractor's testing providing as a result is, is in fact true results. And then they also have a add-on in there that we have to provide a very technical document back to DES, DES formerly BHAC, for final certification before the landfill can receive any trash, that cell. And they're gonna provide all that for 480,000 dollars. So you have the bid of nine point one three three, two four four, and the contract addendum for Lobella at 480,000. Total amount we're asking council to approve as part of this process, nine million, 613,244 dollars to cover construction costs, construction administration, quality assurance, and final documentation for DES.
Does that include any negotiation of penalties for timeline?
In the, in the contract, there is, to find out what the penalties are, can we give them 210 days for construction? It documents out what penalties would be. That hit substantial completion by certain day. There is a, a per day amount for the first 30 days that goes over, and then a different amount for any additional time after that. So, and those are penalties that would come off the cost. We would deduct from the construction cost. So yes, there is.
Lobella would handle that or us?
Lobella would handle all the administrative part of it, to hand us a document that says, here's what you should pay based upon these, this criteria.
All right, thank you.
Questions? Again, if council so, oh, best part of that, I know I spoke a little, I almost forgot the best part, right? So I talked a little blue and gloom about finances out at the landfill. I want to make it very clear that whether it's Public Works staff, whether it's the current treasurer, the county manager, past treasurers, we have been saving for this construction project for the better part of a decade. We have enough money in our cash reserves to cover this entire construction and have a little bit of money left over. All right? Ms. Dorn can speak to the actual amounts, but it's, we have the cash money on hand to handle this. I cannot stress enough how proud I am of, again, my staff and the people who made this happen. We do not have to go out and borrow money for this project. We have planned for this project for the better part of a decade. We have sprinted, we have saved, we have budgeted this project for the better part of a decade. So that today, when we actually do the construction, we can pay cash. When I come before council and ask for money or ask for fee increases, it's a, it's a very big picture of what's going on at the landfill, including future construction and expansion. We don't just wait till the time it is we need to spend the money and then figure out where it's gonna come from. We figure out where it's gonna come from long before we get to this point. We have been fiscally responsible with taxpayer money and that landfill enterprise for the better part of a decade to bring us to this point where we can afford this construction. I'm extremely proud of the people who've been involved. I hope council recognizes the effort that went into this and that we are being very forward in our thinking and budgeting and being very progressive taxpayer money in that we have the cash for this. We do not have to borrow money. We don't have to borrow money out of the general fund. The money is here in the landfill enterprise account. We are running it as an enterprise account. The money we bring in pays for what's going on.
So now that you've finally landed the plane, I'll offer a motion. That we move forward based on that last information we received from the Public Works Director.
I'll second that, Mr. Pruitt. We have a motion and a second. And Rob, we've known for a long time that this night was coming. We knew it was going to be expensive. It has been exceptional work. So council, having heard Mr. Russian's presentation, all in favor as presented to spend nine point six million and some change, sort of show by raising your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you.
For sure.
Our next order of business, resolution 2025 dash two, to consider the amendment of the FY 2025 budget to appropriate funds for the museum remediate, mold remediation, and additional funds needed for jury chairs and landfill cell four construction. Treasurer, Ms. Stephanie Dorn.
Thank you, Chairman, Council. I would like to come before you. We just want items. I like to group them together when I can. So we don't have to do this a lot of times. But we did have some remediation we had to do at the museum. Just as a reminder, that is a county-owned building. So that's why we conducted those repairs. And because the museum is a tourism facility, my recommendation was that we paid for this unexpected expense of nearly 30,000 dollars out of our hospitality tax fund budget. And we have plenty of funds available in the hospitality fund. As a matter of fact, we did not budget all of the revenue for this budget year. We didn't allocate all of the budget out. So we still have funds available within this year's money, not having to come out of the fund balance. So recommend that first. Second, Chastity Cogan, our clerk of court, had put into a project for replacing the jury chairs in the courthouse and had estimated a cost of 36,000 dollars. And unfortunately, she was a little bit short. She negotiated the best she could. But these chairs, if you've ever been in there, these are kind of specialized chairs. They're not just regular sitting chairs. They are actually on a post and they, and they go down onto a seated place, concrete into the floor. So can't just go anywhere and get these chairs. And so she was only able to obtain one bid, which is on state contract. But she did come a little short. She did offer money out of her budget to cover it. But because this is in the capital fund, the project is, and her money's in the general fund, we have to transfer between funds and you all have to authorize that. So asking for that, 1,814,066. And then finally, as you just heard extensively from Mr. Russian, we, we had originally budgeted eight point nine million dollars. And this year's budget included construction and the bidding of the project. And as you heard, we were a little bit short. And so we're asking for 728,244 additional funds be budgeted to complete the cost of that landfill. And as, as Rob said, we do have the cash on hand. We're not gonna have a ton left over. And that'll be something that as we get ready to start talking about FY 26 budget, which is, as we know, just around the corner, we will start talking about how we think about what comes next after cell four, because we won't rest. And it is time to already start thinking about the next one. But, but for now, we're in good shape. And so I would ask that you approve those. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, any questions or comments?
I have a question. Surprise. It's really about ownership of those buildings on that block. Can somebody, so the federal building is owned by the county?
It's owned by the city and county.
Jointly, okay. Then for the museum, now the theater's next.
The next building is the Pals Building, which is owned by the city.
That's at the very end of, but in between there.
And the museum is owned by the county. The theater is owned by the theater.
Okay. So jointly owned county, city, then the theater, well, this, this is the county one for the museum. Then the theater has their own and the Pals Building's the city. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? If not, I'll offer your motion, Mr. Chairman. A motion by Mr. Pruitt?
Second.
Second by Mr. Templeton. All in favor is presented by the treasurer, please signify and raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Stephanie. Resolution C 2025-03 regarding transfer of funds from the 2007 capital project sales tax to the hydro project fund for the fuse plug spillway project. Mr. Rhett Templeton, county engineer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I was, before y'all last meeting, asking for transfer of funds. That resolution, just want to kind of go ahead and spell out what the difference was. I talked about the grant that we applied for last meeting. We had to get some planning for additional environmental work that needed to be done tied to that grant. Those are given to me as separate proposals. What I'm bringing to you tonight is a proposal, I believe it is in your packet. It's laying out additional costs that we need to do to get us to the finish of design. So some of the items that came up, you know, we did some value engineering as part of the change. When they came, when clients, of course, came back to us with 90% of design, they brought us some information, brought us some rough estimates of what it cost. And we wanted to see if we could go through the value engineering process, make sure we bring those costs down. So we worked through that process. That took a little bit of extra effort. That's category, that's captured in this, this project's been going on for quite some time, as y'all are aware. So there's been some cost changes with just some of the permitting processes and just some additional comments we've had to address through the 90% design review. So some of those things changed, which required us to do a change order. They brought it to us in the two format, or two different options of how to proceed. We are recommending, recommending through the resolution to transfer 162,500 dollars to the fund. What this does is gets us to what we believe to be the end of the design. Originally, the original proposal, the original script of work took us through construction. And because of that, this how it was taken, we've reduced, take to the end of the design and not before. They did give us a price, what they estimated to be at this point, and that was gonna be an additional, I wrote it all down here. I'll be asking for 727,000 dollars tonight. And like I said, that's where we're gonna have to get to eventually. And like I said, that's where we're going to have to get to eventually, potentially, but we want to make sure we finish design, go through that process before we work out all the details of how we're going to handle construction management, some of those other tasks that will have to be handled at that time. There may be ways we could find additional cost savings as we get closer. So address the design tonight, worry about that later, but I want to listen to that as a cost that is coming in the future.
So your request tonight is we approve $727,000 total?
No, sir, that's what the total, that's what Kleinsmith says, through construction-
Oh, I'm sorry. $162,500.
$162,500. I just wanted to make sure y'all knew that difference, because I'll be coming back to you at some point in time.
$162,500. $162,500 gets us to 100% design, is that-
That is the, that's what we intend.
That's the intent.
That's the intent, gets us to the finish of design.
That's been a long time coming.
Yeah, and, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, and I just looked at my watch, I don't want to run this meeting any longer, but I would, I would think at some point, get a little better education, because I believe this money dates back to, what, 2007 capital project sales tax? A lot of, for lack of a better term, a lot of work is going on with the dam since then, and we just kind of understanding where it's coming from, what's being applied here and where we're at in it, because people ask me all the time, where's that money going? Why can't it be used? My official answer has always been, you know, when you approve something on the capital project sales tax, that money can only be spent on the specified purpose for which it was intended. And, you know, we've heard different numbers here, $162,500, we've heard $700, just where everything's going, just a little more clarity on that. And maybe that needs to be done at another meeting, but I think I'd like to have that a little more detailed so that I could share with some constituents.
I think the Cliff Notes version, if I may take a stab at it, since I was here when it started, I think the Cliff Notes version-
When they built the dam?
Not that far back, but thank you, Dan. I appreciate that. I should have expected nothing less. Anyway, you know, Stephanie could give you the exact number that's sitting in that account to be held for this project, but, you know, when this first went down, it was an absolute emergency by FERC, that we had to get this done, which is why we ended up going through the capital project sales tax process, because it was the only one that could come up with this money. And I want to say the total project back then was $30 million. 20 of that was for the, was split out for the earthing portion of the dam, which because of the seismic issue that they said we had, and then 10 million was set aside based off of those numbers back then for the fuse plug. When they first came to us, the fuse plug absolutely had to be done, it was the most important thing, it needed to be done quick, and so the process was begun. And then, of course, we battled and battled and battled with FERC on the seismic piece, because they were using a Japanese earthquake model, which wasn't going to happen in South Carolina, but that's our federal government work at times. But we fought, we hired our own specialist, who they approved, only to come back and say they didn't approve his findings. It's, you know, those are the kind of things we've been dealing with and hoops we've been jumping through. We've been to Atlanta, we've been to DC, we've talked to everybody we could possibly talk to. We finally did win our argument on the seismic piece, which was great, and then we were like, can we please get on this fuse plug piece? And we are still battling, as you know, that fuse plug piece, and what, back then, was estimated, I guess, the cost set amount, has increased exponentially. But the thing that, you know, the county has never stopped trying to get this across the finish line and working tirelessly to get it across the finish line. We have been waiting through multiple administrations, presidential administrations, multiple changes in directors at FERC, and we're waiting on FERC. That's all we're waiting on. We've got money, we're trying, you know, we're trying to work with Kleinsmith to get the best solution we can, the most economical solution we can, but, you know, the county's not dragging their feet. We have been waiting on FERC for the entire time, and I know most recently, the manager has talked to some of our new elected officials in Washington who say they're going to help push this across the finish line. I hope and trust that they will, but I hope that helps a little bit, and I still think that, you know, if you need more than that, obviously Tubby and Redd and Dr. Dorn can pull it together, but that's just kind of the Cliff Notes answer as to why we're where we are. It's not the county that's holding this thing up, it's FERC. Well, now that we've heard from the county historian, we'll get back to Resolution- I kind of liked that title. -2025-3. You heard that Mr. Templeton is actually, is asking us to approve a bid of $162,500. I'll take a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve and second from Ms. Miller and Mr. Templeton. All in favor, please signify raising your hand, and that's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you all.
Item D, ordinance 2025-01, establishing the Ferncliff Special Purpose Tax District. Ms. Carson Penny, our county attorney, is going to give us a review on that.
All we need to do is read that into the record at first reading, so it is done.
Which you have done. So we're done with that, first reading, thank you very much. Under pending items, we have the consideration of appointment of joint planning, joint planning commission, and remind me, manager-
Yes, sir.
We don't have an action to take on that, because that's being held, correct?
I think you're waiting on District Two and Three representatives to bring the people forward.
Correct. And that also covers the appointment of library board trustees as well.
Correct.
So we have come almost to the end of our meeting. District reports.
Thank you.
District One.
Mr. Chairman, again, good evening to each and every one of you. Again, thank you, Reverend Norman, for our prayer this evening, and we just thank you for all you do for Greenwood County. Happy New Month to everyone. Also, I'd like to encourage you all to go to the museum. They have excellent exhibits this month for Black History Month celebration. They're open on Wednesday through Saturday. Again, this is heart awareness month, so please take care of your heart. Also, this has been the Love Month, which is Happy Valentine's Day to each and every one of you. And we want to end on a congratulations to Ms. Susan, our clerk of court for, I mean, clerk of council for receiving her Master's Clerk certification last week. So we just want to say thank you for all that you do for us here, County Council, as well as for Greenwood County. And other than that, all is well in District One, and that is my report.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Miller.
Thank you. I'm going to call this my update report to let you know what I've been doing out here, and so I've been very busy. I have actually talked with four citizens in the county, two on debris removal, thanked Mr. Rush for some information, made a splash on them, and another couple people on special tax district questions that they had, thanks to the treasurer's office for that support. I've attended one, two, three, four meetings representing the county council along with some other folks that have attended. I did meet with the CEO of Gleams also, and she wanted me to remind everybody about the code drive that's coming up for Gleams, so if you want information on that, they have a website with that, but it's a drive-through event on February 5th, so contact them if you're interested in that. And again, congratulations to Ms. Susan. And my last comment is that, if you will notice, I'm taking through drive challenges very seriously, I'm very competitive. I've got my two bags in here that I had to get a look at to get them into the building today. I have given each of my council members a Duke Energy bag for them to fill to assist in this challenge as we compete against city council as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Pruitt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think we've got enough time to cover the emails and phone calls that would involve my updates, but I attended the 96 Town Council meeting last week, also attended the ES Foundry ribbon cutting, that was very enlightening, enjoyed my tour greatly. Also attended the Piedmont Technical College ribbon cutting of the Mobile Labs, that was pretty impressive, and also their partnership with Akin Tech and Orangeburg County Technical Colleges, their presidents were also there, that was really nice. This morning, attended the Keep Greenwood County Beautiful Breakfast at Wesley Commons, and our own Amber Napear was recognized and honored, so that was good to see. Yes, Susan, thank you for what you do, we do appreciate that. Also, James already left, James and Abby and the economic development, Billy Ray and the notifications, I heard more compliments on, you know, the job that's being done and getting the word out, and I'm appreciative of that. You and Rob doing the debris removal update videos, very helpful that we can pass those out. Wanted to end on a Bible verse, Romans 12:2 says, "Do not conform to the pattern of this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind; then you will be able to test and approve what God's will is, His good, pleasing, and perfect will." That ends my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Templeton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to let you know that I just got a text message from one of my constituents in District Six that she wholeheartedly approves of county historian as my new type.
(laughter)
No, it wasn't my wife. It was Ms. Belinda Turner, who was one of our faithful watchers, and I appreciate that. Anyway, Kathy, I was going to recognize Kathy for bringing in her bags, because I saw her toting them across the parking lot, but she got them in quicker than I could get there, so sorry about that, Kathy. But she is right, we, it was her idea to issue a challenge to city council for county council and city council to compete. The mayor accepted that challenge. We have until the 20th, so I challenge you to make sure that you do that, that will be a separate weigh-in. Abby has done a tremendous job organizing the county and getting drop-off places and whatever. I've been getting a lot of calls from folks about where they can drop off, so let's just keep pushing over these next three weeks, because it's really important, not only to meet those needs of the organizations we're helping, but also for us to take back the most coveted can of corn that we lost last year. So, and then I want to thank Renee for coming out today to the Greenwood County Recreation Complex. She did a, she had not been out there, she did, I'm sure it was going to be a great piece whenever it comes out.
It's coming out on Thursday.
On Thursday, there you go, see? But for those of you who have not been out there lately, we are getting extremely close to putting the finishing touches on everything. The Recreation Committee will meet soon to talk about some of those finishing touches and what needs to be done, and I want to quickly point out that that project is not over budget, and we still have some, we still have some money left in contingency. I hope it will cover some of the needs that we have in addition to what we've already got out there, but we'll see, and I'm confident that we can take care of that. And lastly, I just want to congratulate my good friend Howard Corley on being inducted into the Greenwood County Hall of Fame. That is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Templeton. And as I've always said, being last is a blessing, because you guys mentioned about four of the things I wanted to mention tonight. I'm going to yield my time in talking about District Seven, all is well in District Seven, but I want to say this, much great work has been recognized tonight, and I don't think anyone could disagree with that. I've always been impressed, and I know he didn't do it tonight probably because of time, but Councilman Pruitt always has a Bible verse for us that is relevant, I think, to the times that we're living in. I have an elderly friend, a lady who lives in New Orleans, and you all know that New Orleans has had a lot of suffering lately, this elderly family friend. And almost daily, when I wake up first thing in the morning, there'll be a text from her just giving me some kind of inspirational, I just wanted to read you this, because it keeps me grounded. She sent me this morning, "Your terrible job is the dream of the unemployed. Your home is the dream of the homeless. Your smile is the dream of those that might be depressed, and your health is the dream of all that are ill. Don't let difficult times make you forget your many blessings." That ends my report. Thank you for being here. This meeting's adjourned. (applause) Oh, excuse me, I didn't ask that. Everybody's got their- thank you.
(laughter)
Robbie!
Okay, I'll put it to you.[1767.13]